Just have a little housekeeping to do. I'm gonna make a motion to appoint Terry Jover as acting clerk for January sixteen, two thousand and four, for this particular council meeting.
Second.
Roll call.
Excuse me, Mayor. I guess I will. Can we do it all in favor of this one? Mayor Foster, doesn't the Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Uh, Councilperson Posonik?
And Mayor Foster says yes, because it's.
Oh, you, we need you for this one, sorry. Okay. Hold on, Jen's watching this tomorrow. She's gonna get a kick. And now can I?
No.
Oh, that was vocal.
Yeah, that was vocal.
Oh, I thought that was the motion to make me the acting clerk.
Motion to make you acting clerk. Okay, that's done.
Okay. And I'll.
And we did the roll call already.
I got it. Sorry.
Jen makes it look easy.
Yes, she does. Okay, sorry, Mayor.
Approval of minutes. Motion to approve minutes as distributed November twenty first, two thousand and twenty three, regular meeting, November twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty three, redevelopment and a regular executive meeting, and December fifth, two thousand and twenty three, regular meeting. Clerk, could you please note that Councilmember Hill is joining us? And seven oh two. Roll call.
I can do motion. I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Okay, uh, Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilman Posonik?
Yes.
And now we're gonna move on to council report, and I'll start off with Councilmember Posonik.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'll start off the report as usual, do with a brief reminder that grocery transportation online food shopping assistance is still available through the community, Department of Community Services. Contact the community center for more details. And staying in the world of the Department of Community Services, we're going to be featuring a Highland Park Swing Orchestra is gonna be performing this Sunday, January twenty first, at two P M. The community center, concert is free, open to all. And then on next Tuesday, January twenty thirty, twelve P M., we will have a winter luncheon with musical entertainment by DJ Johnny Ray. It's for members of the community center. Looking a little further ahead, we're gonna have a special Dragon Dance performance on Tuesday, February sixth, also at twelve noon, in celebration of the Chinese New Year. And just a last community services note, please visit our website, Facebook page, and the MyRec website to be registered for all of our current winter and upcoming spring programming, including our new indoor cable test program, which sounds like a lot of fun. And then so I cover community services, recreation and arts in the arts world. The Gorilla Arts Club has kicked off New Year. As part of the Arts Commission, they just moved full steam ahead of a bunch of activities already just this past weekend. Host an event at the Disney Animal Shelter where kids are able to interact with the animals and take photographs. And they're gonna be making art with those photographs, which will eventually become a fundraiser for the Disney Animal Shelter. And then a little later this month, the Gorilla Arts Club group will be hosting a yoga and art series, which of classes, the first of which will be on Wednesday, January twenty fourth, from six P M. to seven fifteen P M. At the community center, I'm gonna do a mixture of yoga and some arts projects, which are gonna large, eventually culminate in a larger art project. And there, that is my entire report for tonight.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hale?
I want to.
Sure, Mayor. I apologize for being late. I forgot how to scrape my windows. I kind of knew. I've done that a while, but it took longer than I thought it was gonna take. I do apologize. Um, I just one thing, uh, two things, I guess. This is a incredibly tough time of year for our local businesses. You know, a lot of people are away and a lot of people are, you know, sort of hunkered down, especially in weather like this. So if there is ever a time to shop local, this is the time of year that our local businesses really need as much help as they possibly can get. So please, uh, get out and do that. I also wanted to point out that one of the items on our agenda tonight is an agreement for us with the Board of Education and schools on sharing pilot money from Thirty One River Road. This is a commitment that we made quite some time ago, that this pilot agreement, we would share the normal amount with the schools. It took a little while to get the legalities together and figure out how best to do it, but we'll be doing that tonight. And so it's a promise kept. I think it's an important one for us to make sure that we are always contributing what schools need for their support. So that's on the agenda tonight in the consent agenda, so I just wanted to point out. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes, thank you. The Board of Health wants to remind everybody that RSV, COVID, flu, and the stomach virus are high right now. We're at a medium level for the state. Please make sure that all your vaccines are up to date. And wear a mask if you are immune compromised in any way or feel you need to. The Community Commission for Universal Access would like to remind people, please keep your sidewalks clear, especially in this kind of weather, so that people with any kind of disability will be able to safely walk around Highland Park. The Mental Health Commission is rebooting and are looking for new members. Anybody who's interested can email me at T C A N A B E R A at H P borrow dot com, and I will put you in touch with who you need to speak to. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Hale?
Thank you, Mayor. Happy snow day, everybody. I mean, we were joking before that, we've forgotten how to clear our cars off. We've forgotten, we're like in the south now, where you get an inch of snow and everything shuts down, so. But it is, it is a nice, it's a nice reprieve, and I hope everybody enjoyed a much-needed day of rest and and also that school students were able to get out in the snow and be active and do all the things that, I don't even know what my kids did today. They were out, running around, and it was great. Just a few things, just on the snow, I just wanted to thank TPW Director Mike Resorowitz and his team at the Department of Public Works for efficiently and effectively clearing over thirty-one miles of roadways, while also handling North Side Recycling Collection today. It's not magic. It requires a lot of work, and they do a lot with a lip. And so I was saying, you know, I think I wrote something online about waving to your public works employees they go by, please do. Anything helps with you, with the folks who appreciate it, especially when we're, you know, in freezing cold temperatures and in climate weather. And the Borough was unnoticed for several days about the impending storm, and the first significant snowfall we've had in quite some time, and proves we're out treating the roads as soon as snow began to fall yesterday evening. Many thanks to all the residents and retailers who responsibly remove snow from their walkways. It's one of the few less than joyful tasks required on snow days, but having walkways free of snow and ice ensures that we're able to be as mobile as possible, as Councilwoman Canavera just pointed to, particularly when we need to stay off the roads as much as possible. If you want to know more about our snow removal processes, take a look at the two thousand and twenty-two Snow Removal Plan that was developed by Councilman Phil George, TPW, and the Public Works Committee. That's available at W W W dot H P B O R O dot com. You can click on Departments in the drop-down menu, then click on Public Works, and then Snow Removal. If you need assistance clearing your private walkways, the Borough has provided a snow removal referrals list. Please keep in mind that some of the individuals on the list will charge a small fee, high school students, et cetera. And you can find out this by going to W W W H P B O R O dot com, and then see the search bar, you can just type in Snow Removal Referrals twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. And I'll back and post that, I'll post that on my Council Facebook page as well. And then just a reminder, because the week did get off to a, you know, and a non-traditional start with Monday being Martin Luther King Day and a federal holiday, and today being a snow day. Tomorrow, and I say this to remind myself too, tomorrow is Wednesday. It is not Tuesday. And so the garbage collection schedule was amended this week to reflect the holiday, but just a reminder as follows. Tomorrow, January seventeenth, Wednesday, garbage collection will be in Business District, North Side, and Triangle, and Triangle. On Thursday, as usual, South Side Recycling Collection, and then Friday, January nineteenth, as usual, Business District and South Side Garbage Collection. So please make sure that you get your recycling bins and garbage troopers out there. On tonight, Tuesday, January sixteen, Highland Park's Overnight Shelter will be open for anyone in need of a one place to sleep. Due to limited space, individuals in need should call the Highland Park Police Department's non-emergency line, seven three two five seven two three eight zero zero to reserve a spot. Please stay inside if you can. You do not have to be out in the cold. There are resources and shelters available to you. Please check out your neighbors, and please, please do not leave your pets outside. Sustainable Highland Park, I forgot to mention, I chair the Public Works Committee, so Sustainable Highland Park is within that portfolio. Sustainable Highland Park continues to ramp up for the new year, and actually, right now, are discussing how to better leverage their advocacy and what they want to work on in twenty twenty-four. You can learn more about them at sustainablehighlandpark.org. You can sign up for community cleanups. You can enter their adopted drain program, which is really cool, where you can be responsible for taking care of that storm drain on your street if it wants it fills up with debris and leaves. And also legislative advocacy. There are some important proposed bills that are facing the legislature that directly improve our environmental outlooks. Not only part of the whole state. Sustainable Highland Park's next meeting is Wednesday, January twenty-fourth, at seven P M., and that is on Zoom. As the second Chair of Finance, in Councilwoman Kim Cho Han's absence while she's on leave, it is, uh, I just want to report that there will be a Rent Control Board reading on January twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, at five thirty, right here in Earl Hall and its room, two twenty-one South Fifth Avenue, right here. And then I just wanted to, you know, thank the mayor and the Highland Park Teen Center and Ashton Burrell for an amazing Martin Luther King Day event. Mayor, you continue to bring out the All-Stars in the Highland Park, and yesterday was no exception of that. You have more to say about that. So it was really, it's, you know, it's really been great kind of getting back together in the room with our community for a purpose. And obviously, you know, what we're working toward for Martin Luther King Day, and every day, that purpose is justice. It's not just a day of service, even though that is something that we should all be doing every day, but it really is making sure that we have a fair, just, and equitable society, and a fair, just, and equitable one. And then because I just wanted to give a special shout-out of our reorganization meeting that occurred on January second, again, a real celebration of Highland Park, and it was just amazing. You know, still kind of basking in the, you know, the glow of that, but again, I wanted to thank Mayor Foster, congratulate Councilman Dastelnik on your swearing. It's been an honor, you know, campaigning with you and getting, and getting those ideas out there, and a lot to build on. So folks watching at home, hold us to it, and we are, and we're, and we're working hard. I also wanted to just, you know, give a special thanks to my family, who was in attendance that night, Christine, Ruben, and Philip. You put up with a lot, and I think all of us, you know, we have all of us, you know, really have to carve out a significant time away from our families in order to do this work that we love, and the most important thing is to have a family that is supportive of that. So, you know, really, thank you. And then just our, obviously, my council colleagues for your continued support. And Assemblymembers, Sir Lee Stanley, Bob Carr, Ben Chex, and Pat Dagan, Sheriff Millie Scott, County Commissioner Shantel McCullough, East Bronx of Mayor Brad Cohen, Assemblywoman Angela McKnight, and then finally, and thanks to the mayor for reaching out to Representative Bonnie Watson Coleman for, to conduct the swearing. She is, you know, she's in the neighboring congressional district, but she is fighting every day for New Jersey. That is my report. Thank you.
Thank you.
You couldn't remember my title?
I'm battling between titles tonight, Barre Administrator Joker.
I did have one thing, Mayor. Thank you. I just wanted to thank residents for hearing the call to get your meter replaced. You would have gotten a letter from me, kind of terse language, saying, second and final notice, we really need you to follow through on the replacements. We, as of the end of the year, we had about eight hundred to go out of more than three thousand. So we're really, really close, and we have been booking a lot of appointments. So I really thank everybody for following through the information on how to schedule your appointments up on our website, and you should have a letter if this applies to you. So I just want to keep the pressure on, keep making those appointments, and we will hopefully have this wrapped up in the first quarter of the year. Thanks.
We're returning.
No report, Madam Mayor.
I have a very brief report, and it's good to be here, and it's good that the team is here to serve the Borough, and thank you all for having faith and confidence enough for us to come back and to do the work that we need to do. I want to start off by saying that yesterday we had a most successful MLK, Dr. Martin Luther King celebration at a high school. I especially want to thank Ashton Burrell from Zone Six and all the work that he did to organize that event. He was fortunate enough to get the Attorney General to come, Matt Patten, Patten, to come and speak, and he also gave him an award. And he didn't, he didn't come in at the beginning and dashed. He came in almost in the middle of the program. And I said, Ashton, why is, why is the Attorney General at the end of the program? He said, the Attorney General told him that he did not want to just come in, say a few words and leave. He wanted was to stay and enjoy the program. And believe me, he stayed, and he enjoyed the program. He took lots of pictures. He answered questions. He talked about how policing has changed. And it was really refreshing to see the new direction that they're, they're working on and that they're going in. For an example, the attorney, Deputy Attorney General was accompanying him as well, and they talked about some of the work that they have been doing here in Highland Park, and which I was surprised to know. And one of the new directions that they're looking at is how does food's insecurity affect poverty and affect crime and violence? And with that in mind, their new track is to address the situations of poverty, which is a lot of times food insecurity. And they started doing a few distribution drives here in Highland Park, along with Ashton, the Zone Sixteen Center. And just, that's just one remarkable way of how community policing can be done, and not just at the local level, but also coming down from the top. And I really embrace, and I really like that idea. And he reached out to Ashton today to say that he wants to have a meeting to talk about more initiatives that we can do, and I'm really looking forward to that. So I will keep you posted. I also wanted to talk about the speakers and the singers. They were remarkable. But there was one particular person that came and sang. And after he sang, I said, he came to me and he said, I did this for you. And I said, thank you so much. I appreciate it. Later on, Ashton, that even Ashton called me that night, and he said, when he said he did this for you, he was in the hospital, and he took his I V out, and he came to Highland Park, and he did this. And I was just bowled over. I just could not believe that, you know, one of our local residents who's receiving treatment left the hospital just to honor his promise to be at the Martin Luther Day King event. And that just shows the extent of the extraordinary, the super extraordinary residents that we have here in Highland Park. And I'm gonna keep him in my prayers that all will go well with his treatment, and I just amillion thanks, a million thanks. Okay, that was kind of, but, um, the snowstorm is here, and I too want to thank TPW for clearing our roads, as Councilmember, as Council President said. And also remind each and every one of you to clear your sidewalks, keep the roads from being slippery, make sure that our friends and family, as they walk and traverse the sidewalk, that it's safe for everyone as they move around. And if you clean your car, do not dump the snow in the street, because somehow it's gonna come back again and just creates a problem. So be considerate of the DPW workers as you try to clean your walkways and clean your cars. On another note, I want to talk about the supermarket. And earlier in this month, I spoke about that we wanted was to have a supermarket advisory committee group. We're still working on it, and we have a date. I have a number of names of persons who want to volunteer and want to come in and give their advice and input. And we're gonna, our first meeting is gonna be on January twenty-fourth, and it's gonna be set up to discuss the offerings, what SuperFresh they would like to see in the new SuperFresh supermarket, to their choice. And we planned this meeting, and I would love to have members of the public to come in and to talk about it, and to talk about what they would like to see, and so we can go back to the owners of SuperFresh and say, these are some of the ideas that our residents or some of the things that our residents are interested in. If you, if you would like to become a part of this group, please reach out to Harry Glazer, our Public Information Officer, and it's H Glazer at H P borrow dot com. Highland Park Teen Advisory, Mayor's Teen Advisory is very, very active. They met, they met, and they asked a bunch of questions. They met with me, our Borough Administrator Joker, and Highland Park Police Department Lieutenant David Soden so far, and they're gonna be meeting with a lot of other leaders in our community to ask questions and to see how they can help various charities or various groups and organizations that they see that are in need. This year, they're gonna be raising funds for the Highland Park Fire Department, also for the Cancer Treatment and Education Center at Rutgers University, and a program for seniors to connect seniors that they want to put together, and they're gonna be working hard at it. They're a group of dedicated individuals, and whenever they say they're gonna do something, I've seen that they have lived up to it and oftentimes superseded what their goals are. And also, we, I would like to connect more, or we would like to connect more with our residents. So we were asking everyone to sign up for NICSOL, so you can get alerts from the Borough, and so you can be in touch and in tune with what's going on in the Borough. So if you would like to get in touch, again, reach out to Harry Glazer at H B, at H Glazer at H P borrow dot com, and he'll be happy to connect with, connect you to our NICSOL messages and also to our Take Five. And that's my report. And now we're gonna move into our first public discussion. Total time allotted is twenty-one minutes, three minutes maximum per speaker. Comments are limited to items on the agenda. If you want to speak to an item that's not listed, please do so at the second public comment session later in this meeting. The Borough Clerk will monitor the time and indicate when three minutes has elapsed. She will give you a warning when there is thirty minutes remaining. I may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement if it does not adhere to the three minutes provided, or if the statement is abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Comments from the member of public attended in person will be heard first, followed by those on Zoom. If you're interested in speaking, please step to the microphone and do so. Those who on Zoom press the raise hand button or star nine on your phone keypad, or raise your hands. Raise your hand button. For anybody in the public, if you wish to speak, you know. I see that we have no public members tonight. So clerk, I'm gonna turn it over to, if there's anyone on Zoom.
Yes, we have, just for the record, thirteen attendees on Zoom, and I see one hand raised. Mary Forsberg, could you please confirm your name and address?
Hi, my name is Mary Forsberg, three seventeen Edison Street. I see that you have an ordinance to appropriate the pilot money to the school. And I'd like to know how much the pilot is from Thirty One River Road, and how much is actually going to the schools. And I'd also like to know if that, if the town had not set up a pilot for that, how much the town would be collecting in property taxes for that brand-new, nice building?
I'm sorry, Mary, for what? You said for some new, nice building, but I didn't hear.
For the apartment building at Thirty One River Road.
Oh, okay.
Barre Administrator? I can answer the first part. I don't have the second part handy, so Mary, go up with me on email, and I'll get you that information. We, it is by resolution, just to clarify. The resolution sets aside sixty percent of the Borough share of the pilot payment. There's a portion that has to go to the county by statute. And what this resolution does is, this is the the two thousand and twenty-three collection, this is, the share from twenty-three is paid in the first quarter of two thousand and twenty-four. That's how the agreement is set up. So the two thousand and twenty-three Borough share was ninety-four thousand, nine hundred and nineteen dollars, according to the schedule I'm looking at. So sixty percent of that is approximately fifty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. I may be wrong, a dollar or two, that gives you the way. As to what the tax, if this was without a pilot, I'd have to look into that question.
So if there's, the second part to your question, we'd have to get back to you, Mary, on that.
Okay. I see another hand, Mayor. Hold on a second. Colleen Tyler, you're up next. Please state your name and address for the record. I may have to unmute yourself for us to hear you.
Sorry. My name's Colleen Tyler, one forty-two North Sixth Avenue, Highland Park.
Okay.
Yes, I'm concerned about the potential for, as I understand it, six marijuana dispensaries coming into town. I don't see the need for that many. In the count of our size, the size of our town, it seems to be excessive. And also, I know there are some questions being raised about the approval of these dispensaries. So I guess that's the question I'm wondering is, how is the public able to input opinions about, I think, this excessive amount of marijuana dispensaries?
Colleen, this, this was approved, I believe, about three years ago. Councilmember Hale, do you want to speak a little bit about this?
Sure. I mean, the process for deciding on the number of dispensaries and the distribution of licenses happened about two years ago. And so there were a number of public meetings, a number of hearings, a number of discussions about the appropriate amount of dispensaries in Highland Park. So we had a process that where applicants came in to apply for cannabis licenses, that we had, that we went through, again, my recollection is, it was about two years ago. They'd been waiting for the state licenses, and many of them who are, have conditional approval from Highland Park are still waiting for state licenses. So we had this discussion quite some time ago, and certainly there was a debate on the number of, the correct number. And so that's happened quite a while ago, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Colleen, this was, well, as of two thousand and twenty-four, it was three years ago that this was approved, and it was also one of the ballot questions, and seventy percent of people voted to have the legalization. And then we went through an entire process and a vetting process that these folks went through, and the, it was settled. And I think we had about twenty people that wanted was to come in, and we, it was narrowed down to. And we, it was narrowed down to five licenses that was issued.
Okay.
And as of today, one shop has been opened.
I still think it's an excessive amount for a small town like this. And I think it sends the wrong message, especially to the youth of our town, to have these shops, so many of them. I, I understand that it's legalized and that the town voted to, to, you know, to allow dispensaries. But I think six is an excessive amount and I, I am concerned of the effect of these shops on our, our youth, especially teenagers.
Thank you for your comments. Oh, we have one in person. Please state, do you have your name and address?
Sure. Mary Bultion. What do I need to do, Terry?
Yeah, yeah. Just put out the microphone.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Mary Bultion, seven oh nine Madison. I'd like to get on the record my objection to tonight's resolution, one twenty-four forty-four, issuing retroactive permission for a Highland Park marijuana license. To begin with, an ordinance is a law that a town adopts for its own operations. There are also federal and state laws. Council members are not expected to pick and choose which of these three types of laws they will abide by and which they will ignore. Seven months after your first marijuana law, which was ordinance twenty-one two oh two seven, you identified procedures for how exactly you would authorize a marijuana license after the state issued a pot shop its own version of a license. To do so, you enacted your second marijuana law, ordinance twenty-two two oh four four. Section one, three, six, seven, F, that only appears in ordinance twenty-two two oh four four reads, "The local business license will not be issued from the borough until a state-issued license is presented to the borough clerk's office or presentment to the council to authorize the clerk's office to issue the license by rate of resolution." Simply put, there was no resolution presented until tonight to issue a license. But a license was issued on January ninth. This is January sixteenth. The concern is that Highland Park has violated its own local law because it issued a license to a pot shop without any council resolution being publicly introduced and devoted on before issuing that license. You claim to have your reasons for bypassing this stipulation, but I hope you appreciate how objectionable it is if council members sidestep their own local law ordinance and with none of the penalties specified in the local law, which mentions revocation of a license for, and I quote, "any violations of the terms of this chapter." So my first question is to you, by a show of hands, how many of you recognize what I've described is a valid concern?
Attorney, you want to address that question?
Yes, Madam Mayor. The ordinance was put together before the final CRC regulations that were promulgated and adopted by the state. And when the state adopted those twenty, two hundred and twenty pages worth of regulations, they gave very little direction to the municipality about how and when it should or shouldn't act on a business license. In fact, it's silent on that whole issue. So when this operator came to the clerk, the clerk called me and said, "What do we have to do in order to license them and allow them to open?" And the steps were that the code enforcement officer had to make sure that all of the code enforcement issues were addressed, the CO was in place. There was an inspection done by his office to make sure that was in order. And the other items that had to be cleared in order to allow that property to open were, were cleared here in the borough. We took a look at the CRC regulations to see what the issuance of a state license for retail cannabis said. And it simply said that once the license was issued, and in this case, it was issued on, I believe it is December twentieth of last year, then the retailer is authorized and allowed to open. So we took the position that the retailer who had waited for this final approval from the state was allowed to open as long as they were in compliance with all the regulations of the borough. And then we also took the position that we could basically adopt that business license, which is normally issued by the clerk's office without any involvement of the governing body anyway. If you go take a look at our chapter two forty-seven, all the business licenses are just administratively handled. In this case, we had put it in to the ordinance to say that the council would issue a resolution. But we determined that they should be allowed to open under the state law and that we would bring the resolution to the council this evening, retroactive to the ninth, when the issue, when the, the local license was issued. So I, I think whatever steps we took, we tried to take it, taking a look at the state law, which probably trumps our local law, and we issued the license when they were ready to receive it.
So did any of you actually review the language in ordinance two-two, two oh four four regarding issuance of a license as I specifically read what you put into place?
I believe that the entire mayor and council read exactly what the attorney put into place, what we have in place, and what we were advised by the attorney.
So you issued the license regardless of the fact that your local law says you have to issue it, the license by rate of resolution. That's the local law you put in place.
Attorney Smear, I, I believe that, as you said, we, that the state law trumps our local laws. So we were, we were in lockstep with what the state law says. Am I clear on that?
That's correct, Madam Mayor.
But you're not in compliance with the local law. Do you understand that?
But the state law supersedes what we do. So based on what we were advised by our attorney, we followed the appropriate steps.
Federal law also supersedes state law, just so you have it on the record. My second question for you, Elsie, as our mayor and
We've gone over
We've gone over the three minutes.
Up to you, how you want to handle.
I'd like to ask my second question, circumstances, and most of that time was at answering. Thank you. For you, Elsie, my second question, as our mayor and our longest-serving member of council, you've participated in literally hundreds of ordinances and resolutions in Highland Park. So can you please tell us, do you intend to issue all Highland Park marijuana licenses without publicly introducing and voting on a resolution first? And if so, why? And if not, why not?
I will be following the advice of our council.
Ed, can you comment then to my question?
Well, I mean, the answer might be that that section of the ordinance could be repealed because these business licenses, as opposed to a marijuana license, okay, are different. And normally, the business licenses are handled administratively by the clerk's office.
Right. You did put that language into this ordinance, this local law.
It, it's in, it's in the ordinance. We didn't break the law because we interpreted to the state law as indicating that once, once an operator got their license from the state and they were told they could open a retail shop, we had the obligation to move forward and allow them to do that. They'd been waiting for two years to get to this point. And they were to the point where we believed that they are entitled to get their operations open. And that's why the business license was issued and it will be ratified tonight.
Regardless of the specific language in twenty-two two oh four four.
Right. As I said before, we believe that language has probably been trumped or superseded by the CRC state regulations.
Thank you so much.
I do see, it looks like Ms. Tyler's hands back up again. Ms. Tyler, please unmute yourself.
That was a mistake. That was a mistake. Sorry.
Oh, no worries. Hold on, I think I just, I didn't. Okay. No more hands raised.
Okay. Now, we're gonna, we're, we're gonna move on to ordinance requiring a first reading by resolution. Clerk, can you please report on the introduction of ordinance number twenty-three dash two zero eight one?
Sure. Capital ordinance providing for improvements to North Fourth Avenue, Denison Street, and Harper Street project in the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, appropriating six hundred and nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars in the Department of Transportation municipal aid program. Therefore, to pay the cost thereof, has been duly introduced by the finance committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject ordinance number twenty-three dash two zero eight one?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Mayor, I was just to say, and the public hearing is set for February sixth, twenty twenty-four. Jen told me not to let you go past that.
Okay, rolling things. Okay, roll call. Okay.
Oh, sorry. Councilwoman Cannavera.
Yes.
Councilman Hale.
Yes.
Council President Hirsch.
Just, yes, and I just wanted to point out that it's Harper Street, not Harper Place, not to be confused. Harper Street is in much, in much need of repairs, as is Denison.
Councilman Postle.
Yes. Okay. On the consent agenda, may I have a motion to adopt or reject the following consent agenda items, eighteen through, thirteen A through thirteen A D?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Cannavera?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilman Postle.
Yes. Resolution requiring a separate reading, one dash twenty-four dash forty-seven. Resolution to approve budget transfer. May I have a motion to adopt or reject?
I'll move it.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Cannavera?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yeah.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilperson Postle.
Yes.
And now it's time for the second public discussion. Total time allotted is twenty-one minutes, three minutes maximum per speaker. The clerk may monitor the timing, indicate when three minutes has elapsed. She may give you a warning when there is thirty seconds remaining. I may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement, or if it does not adhere to the three minutes provided, or the statement is abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Comments from members of the public attending the meeting in person will be heard first, followed by those attending on Zoom. To those on Zoom who wish to speak, please press star nine or the raise hand button on your keypad. Or, I'm sorry, or raise, or the raise hand button. Please press star six to unmute yourself when you wish to speak. Please begin by telling us your name and address and the Borough Administrator will announce.
I think I do have one hand up in Zoom. We have sixteen attendees. Mary Forsberg, please confirm it to you.
Hi, Mary Forsberg, three seventeen Denison Street. I noticed that in the paperwork for this meeting, there are a lot of rental agreements that you are setting up for the various buildings that the borough owns, which include things like ten dollars a year for a couple of buildings and things like that. I am concerned about the amount of, of, of property that the borough has taken off the, the tax rolls. And I'm wondering where money from these five marijuana shops. I gather you are anticipating, thinking that you're gonna get a lot of money from that. Where that will show up in the budget? I guess it would just be under revenue. And I'm also curious about the very generous money that was given by the former policeman in Highland Park for, that has been set up as five oh one C threes. How, how does that, how will that be incorporated? How does, how do the new vehicles and how does the money for the library show up in the budget? Or doesn't it? How, how will that money be administered?
I'll start off with the Kushner grant. None of that money, one of the requirements of the grant was that each group that received funding had to be a five oh one C three, stand alone, separate, and apart from the borough. The borough could not be involved in any of the issuance or controlling of the money. So each entity that received money, they, they had to have their five oh one C three. What we have been, what we will do for these groups that were a part of the borough and are now a part of a five oh one C three organization, because they are a supporting arm of the borough, we will provide them with space. So we will continue to provide them with space, but we will not be in charge of any of the money. We will not see any of the money at all. It will be handled under a separate five oh one C three, separate and apart from the borough.
So are you going to have a separate group of people who are going to make, be making decisions about some of those things? Or how, how, how will people be selected to be the arbitrators of how the money's gonna be used?
For example, if you were, if you're a member of Highland Park Food Pantry, they now have a five oh one C three organization. And as five oh one three Cs go, they have to set up a board, they have to do their accounting measures and everything else like that. So they have their own five oh one C three that is in place. Highland Park gives a hood, has the same thing. The fire department has your five oh one C three. The, the PBA has a five oh one C three, so they are separate and apart. And the funds is being administered through a, the money's being administered through a fund.
So are you
To these groups.
Are you planning?
So we have, in other words, the Borough of Highland Park has no, over, we do not oversee any of the funds. It's a sep, it's totally separated from us.
So are we going to see budget reductions as a result of this money being made available?
I'm not sure about that, Mary. We'll wait and see, but I don't see, well, if we didn't plan to buy a fire engine and we're getting one for free, they wouldn't, you would not see a budget reduction.
What about the library? We've, we're investing a lot of money in the library.
And, and I'm so happy that the Kushner grant came in and they, they very much needed all the upgrades in the library. We could only go but so much. But with the Kushner grant, with the upgrades that the borough has put, has monies, has allocated to put in, such as the roof and other areas, there were other areas of the library that was not gonna be completed. The Kushner grant will help with those things, such as the bathroom and a garden outside. And I think a study area in the library, which is something that we could not have done this year or this year because we just don't have the, the money to do it. But with the Kushner grant, we were able to get a lot more upgrades in a shorter amount of time. The library was able to do that. Let me not say we, because the borough has nothing to do with that part of the Kushner grant.
So the trustees of the library will be making those decisions?
I am not sure who, that who was named to be a part of that five oh one C three organization that they had to put together. I'm not sure about that, but I'm quite sure Mr. Bobbitt should be able to answer your questions.
How, how would one get information? How would one be able to look at the, the information on, on the various five oh one C threes?
I would suggest that you reach out to them because they, they're not an arm of, they're not a part of the borough. As I said, we provide them space. But if you wanted was to see their operating budget, how they're set up as an organization, I believe that you have to reach out to these organizations and request that information. If you're asking if, who are these groups that are receiving the funds, we can provide you a list of the organizations that will be, will be receiving the Kushner grant fund. But if you're asking what your daily operation is, I can't answer that question.
And I, I noticed in the, in your ordinance's resolutions for tonight, that one of the things is something about the flat roof on the library. I guess I expected that the flat roof would have been the first thing that the town would be fixing rather than doing any kind of internal things with the library.
And you're so correct, Mary, that that process has started since last year. And you're so correct, Mary, that that process has started since last year. That's why we had satellite locations for the library. I believe Councilmember Hale had wanted us to add to this discussion.
I would just add that, that nonprofit organizations file something called a ten ninety that is a, 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 a form of the state. Then all of the nonprofit organizations that are set up as a result of the Kushner grant will eventually file a ten ninety and that's a public document that is available to anybody who wants to see how they're operating, where their funds are going.
And also they have to file with the feds as well.
I'm sorry, nine ninety, not.
Nine ninety. They have to file with the federal government as well. All righty.
No hands raised on my man.
And I see no one in public, in our public sphere. So at this time, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn to, and there's no executive session.
Yes.
Oh, motion to adjourn to executive session, sorry.
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, ladies and gentlemen. Have a good night and stay safe. Thank you. Weird.